The lack of basic impact studies. There has not been a substantial traffic study, no infrastructure review, and no pedestrian safety assessment. As a mother of twin toddlers, I walk with my daughters along Ninth East regularly, often on our way to Wheeler Farm. Our only access to the main road is a narrow easement that all of Essex Court depends on. During peak rush hour as a driver, turning in or out of the neighborhood is also very difficult as it stands. Left turns from the center lane from Ninth East often put us in direct conflict with cars coming into Fair Meadow condominiums, creating an unsafe and confusing situation that feels more like a standoff than a safe intersection. Introducing additional traffic from a new development without any review or traffic control plan only compounds these risks. This is not about resisting change, it's about demanding responsible change. The proposal does not demonstrate compatibility with the surrounding residential area. It doesn't include meaningful commercial development despite being labeled as mixed use. It doesn't respect the existing scale, access, or infrastructure that our neighborhood relies on. As both a neighbor and a representative of my community, I urge you to reject this proposal and require a process that is thoughtful, transparent, and rooted in the long-term health of Midvale. Thank you for your time, and remember, as the saying goes, "Safety first, then teamwork."
Thank you.
Thank you.
You could have procrastinated a little.
Hello, my name is Arlo Hancock. I'm an Essex Court resident. I'm a mechanical engineer by profession. Something that I wanted to bring up is that we've had a similar situation like this not too long ago in Sandy, where a five-over-one, this type of building where you have a one-story cement slab, you guys know. It burned down and cost about $59 million in damages. We don't know what happened with the business park, it just went up in 2021. Since that time, we've since lost one-phase power. Well, we had two-phase power because you have 240 volts, goes to like your oven and AC and stuff, and then 120 to all your outlets. We lost our 240 phase and went down to 120 after the building burned down. We're not, it just rocky mound fixed it, but like that's the beginning and the end of it. We've also had a water main break that flooded our entire community. It was quite fun, thankfully it was fixed, and there was no like lasting big problems. But those are big, two major things to consider when dealing with engineered materials. So, the Sandy com-- sorry, this is stressful. With the Sugar House fire, they believe it was electrical or a gas thing that happened before the fire suppression was put in. But with engineered materials, they look like wood, they're mostly oil. It's glues, adhesives, epoxies, all this engineered lumber, it turns into paper mache when it gets wet. And so, one of the big problems that you have with these types of buildings are that water gets behind the boards and you can't see it, and then if you go in to fix it, they burn very fast and very hot. And so, the fire codes matter a big deal when you have a building that could be rezoned to be up to 85 feet. So, another thing is, yes, it does block sunlight, but the gravity doesn't care what's under it when a burning piece of building falls. We don't know what happened before. I'm very, very concerned about how this could impact putting this big stressor on the infrastructure we currently have when we don't really know what caused the previous problems. So, those are my biggest, as a mechanical engineer, I'm a bit of a nerd, I look about this stuff, those are my biggest concerns, and I think that affects everybody equally because it doesn't help them if their big building burns down regardless of how anybody else feels about it. As far as the rezoning goes, I do, I, I think they're missing a huge opportunity. We've had that mortgage lending place moved into where the old Jiffy Lube is, Utah Medical Association building finished recently. I would invite everyone here to go to Paris Baguette. It replaced, it's so good. There's a lot of opportunities here that could help the community and could be a good thing that isn't a big time bomb. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good timing, too.
My name's David McBride, I am the property owner just north adjacent to the specific property. Let me first start off, and Adam expressed my appreciation for coming to the table and trying to make some modifications that are better. My concerns candidly, I would ask that the Planning and Zoning Commission deny this, obviously for the state, for the perspectives that my attorney shared, but also, I'm just curious, and I don't pretend to know code, I'm curious why, my fear is that if this overlay is approved, then they have every right to come back and modify what this rendering or existing proposal would be, and they would be back to the same, I believe it's 85-foot height based on what that zoning is. Again, I would just simply ask if there was a way for there to be a conditional use arrangement tied to this development which would guarantee that we would be treated fairly. In my own personal perspective, I am not trying to dissuade development from occurring, but there have been some very eloquent answers as to its scope and its size. My concern from a safety perspective, this, these comments were extremely well thought out relative to safety and perspective, and I would just ask that, I look at it and I chuckle when I see all of these five-over-ones, the first level is always commercial, and every time I drive by in any part of this valley, I have not seen a long-term commercial tenant stay in those five-over-ones. It be, it seems to me that it becomes an opportunity for them to use the code to benefit themselves. I would love an opportunity for, for additional discussion and perspective that would perhaps reduce the size in terms of height and setback size so that this, again, would still allow them to develop something that's appropriate, but for us as landowners, property owners, would give us an opportunity to have some consensus that would not divide us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one else can get up until she gets up.
Hi, thank you for your attention tonight. I feel like you have all been very attentive, and I really appreciate that. I'm a homeowner at Essex Court, and my unit is one of the units that is closest to this proposed development.
Can you state your name, please, so they can get it on the record? Just state your name.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Emmy E M Y Cordano, C O R D A N O. If you'll just give me a minute, I'd like to ask everyone here, who is for this development? Exactly two people, both of them being the developer. Kind of telling, I counted the people in the room, and there's 45 people in the room excluding them. So, I'd like to get it on the record that every single person at this meeting tonight is against this development. A second, or third, or fourth, or fifth, or 45th, every single comment that has been made, but I'd like to address some of the comments that Mr. Knoblock made that have not yet been addressed. The first one is, he specifically said a commercial building is not reasonable. I'm assuming he's saying that it's not reasonable because of the economy, because commercial buildings are empty. It's interesting that he says that this is reasonable when this is going to have a lot of commercial space in it. We have no reason to believe that that's not going to be empty. Secondly, most of the very large buildings that have been built in Midvale are at least still, three, four, or five years later, 40% empty. How do I know this? Because I'm trying to rent my unit. So, I went around and figured that out for myself. Why do we need this? He says this enhances the welfare of the city. Exactly how does this enhance the welfare of the city when none of them live there, and everyone in this room actually lives there and has made multiple comments indicating that this does not enhance the welfare of the city? And if this is going to be built, and it's going to remain 40, or 50, or 60% empty, how is that going to satisfy the welfare of the city? It might get full in 40 years, but it's certainly not going to get full now. And the most important problem here, you guys, is that this can't be undone. If you approve this rezoning, and they come back and do whatever they want to with that rezoning, we have no reason to believe that, we have no, they've changed it three times. Why do we have any reason to trust them? We don't. So, this will never be undone. The area will be forever changed if you approve this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Looks like we have no more public comments.
If there's no more public comment.
Can I have one more?
Chair?
I'm looking at you.
Come in.
I recently--
State your name one more time, please.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Edward Kimball, I'm with Essex Court, and I recently reviewed the 2019 Midvale City Housing Plan, and I found in that plan a statistic that just kind of shocked me. It said that 58% of the residents in Midvale live in a rented house. That's a house, apartment, a condo, or something, 58%. Now, this is 2019, it's very thorough, I thought, the analysis that this plan did. The recommendation was the plan with that much grow and go in the community, people moving in, starting a family, and then moving out because there isn't enough housing to support them. The recommendation was to build more houses, to facilitate the building of more homes for families, condos, townhomes, row homes, that type of thing, okay? So, if that's what the study said, that is the recommendation to Midvale City, then why are we building this seven-story or five-story apartment complex? Why aren't we looking at building more condominiums or some, where we have people, quality housing coming in, where people are going to want to stay in Midvale City? Reduce the number of people that are here and then turn around and leave because we don't have adequate housing or housing that satisfies them? That would be my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a PS, Colleen Harrington. I want to see your study to quantify the traffic conditions as they are now, and I want to understand, I want to see your study of the infrastructure, the water, the sewage. Is that available? Did you do that? How did you study the traffic to decide that it would be okay to add 140 units? Is there a study available? Was there a study done?
There have been studies made.
For this one?
Not on an individual project, but by areas of Midvale. We have quite a few studies that have come up recently that are available for anyone to read online, and I will go through those after the public hearing portion.
Where can I see the Fort Union and Ninth East study?
There's a Fort Union corridor study that you can find on the Midvale website.
Okay, and when was that done?
There's also a State Street worker study. It was in the last five years.
Okay, things have changed, okay? I would like a current study of the traffic--
Okay.
--before this ever goes forward.
We'll get into that a little bit when the public hearing is done.
When the public hearing portion is over, we have lists of questions and topics that we're happy to go over.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Candace, for making a list of the questions, and she has not been on her phone, she has been writing question, the questions that we wanted to answer--
Many pages.
--through this, and so, I appreciate that.
Seeing as there's no more public comment, I would move that we close the public hearing portion of the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
There's a lot of passion here tonight.
There is. I would like to have our attorney speak to us, please.
Yes, so, this is a legislative decision, which means the decision is actually made by the city council. Your role is to provide a recommendation to the city council as to what you think the city council should do. As far as the general plan goes, you're required, it's used as an advisory guide in helping to make land use decisions, it's not binding on what decisions are made. And again, with it being a legislative decision, you do have a more broad discretion as to what you're making your decisions, but again, ultimately, it's a decision that the city council will be making, and you will be making a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Vandalin, what is the current zone? What does it allow for development there?
On setbacks and heights particularly.
Pardon me?
For setbacks and heights for the RC zone.
The regional commercial?
Yeah, so, right now, it's zoned regional commercial. That's our bona fide commercial zone, that's what the Fort Union Shopping Center area is in, for the most part. The height of the buildings is 75 feet. And I can, I can pull up the ordinance and go into more detail, maybe 85, maybe confusing those, I can look it up. Setbacks are pretty minimal in that zone, and many of our zones have very minimal setbacks. There's some buffering required, that introduces a quasi-setback oftentimes, but the setbacks are minimal in the RC zone. And this property is currently zoned RC, regional commercial. The property to the north is actually most properties to the north and also to the south.
So, between 75 and 85 would be your--
Yeah.
--for the height, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, any other questions?
Well, I did want to bring up the recent studies that Midvale has done, just, I'm not sure exactly when some of those studies started. I know that we voted and we finished them within the last three years. And all of those studies did take into account traffic, pedestrian, they took into account growth as well, very similar to this type of growth. I find some of the, oh, there was the fancy term, who was it here? Oh, Mr. Sam Kingore was mentioning the traffic calming around Fort Union and around Ninth East going into that shopping center. That is a big part of this study that was done. There's some fascinating things about integrating pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, and how that can be utilized better and be not so treacherous and terrifying. Because I agree, being a pedestrian in that intersection is not something that I would want to do. I understand that, I also see that, I don't live very far away, I drive home from work on Ninth East almost every day. So, we understand, we live in Midvale as well, so I don't want you to think that we're just pushing it off to the side and saying it doesn't affect us, because it definitely, definitely does. Yeah, that study, I recommend, go to the website, there's quite a few studies, traffic or transit-oriented zones, talking about all of our track stations in our city, we have a few. So, I just want to put that plug in there. Also, Ninth East is controlled by UDOT, is that correct?
Yes, it's a state highway, yeah.
Right, so, a lot of that mitigation happens at that level and not necessarily at this level. That doesn't mean you don't have a voice to reach out to UDOT folks and express your concerns of that intersection. It has been flagged as a traffic problem. They have like those heat maps that show how many accidents happen in each intersection in Midvale, and the ones that they know they need to work on, whether we can control it or not necessarily. We are aware of those situations. I know Seventh East and 7500 South is on that map, and that's a bypass for people trying to avoid that intersection, they go down Seventh East, I know. So, it affects everyone, not just Ninth East itself, but also the tertiary areas. Want to put that out there, we recognize that.
Maybe a quick confirmation of the question on the height.
Yeah.
So, the RCRO zone, the overlay we've been talking about, has a maximum height of eight feet, the ordinance, 85 feet, and the order--
That'd be like--
And so, and the ordinance actually states to the highest floor plate, which means that could go higher. In the RC zone, the maximum height is 75.
And that's the top of structure, or top of finish, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there was the qualification that we heard about earlier, if you are within 100 feet of a single-family residential zone. Also, there's many follow-up items that's connected with this, there was a statement made that the developer could get zone changed, zone change approved, the zone would be applied to the property, and then at that point, the developer could turn around and do something totally different. And I think everyone understands your fear on that the city does too, and the city has had situations like that in the past. There is a tool, however, that Utah Legislature has provided, and that's a development agreement. Development agreement runs with the land, and the city council can invoke a development agreement and then instruct us as staff to draw that agreement up, negotiate it with the developer, and then the city council is free to approve that or to deny that, and that agreement stays with the land. So, that's the, really the tool the city has to have a control in what can happen on this piece of land if the zoning gets changed.
And in this scenario, we are, there is not a development agreement currently in force?
Not at this point, but the way our ordinance system is set up, the process starts with you as the planning commission, but you can't commit the city in a contractual fashion. That's what the city council, you know, is for, and so--
Legislative action.
Yeah.
I could recommend that they consider--
Yeah, you, I guess you could, I mean, we'll have to double-check with the attorney, but I'm sure, you know, you can attach whatever you feel is appropriate to your motion. You are, I mean, you are, you are making recommendation to the city council.
So, if we were to approve this--
Or deny.
Or deny, whatever, recommend approval or denial, because we don't make a decision. If we made it without a development agreement currently in force, the developer would be free to use the land within the confines of the current ordinance? Could the city go back and then enforce a development agreement where they're building within the specs of the ordinance?
Maybe that's a bit of a misunderstanding, so, right now, that parcel is zoned regional commercial. And the concept that we are seeing, right now, if the developer came to us and said, "Here's my building permit for this building," we would say, "No, this is not zoned for that." So, until the zoning changes, there isn't, the developer can't do anything.
Engage in it, okay.
Yeah, and so, and it's really within, in the end, the city councils realm to decide do they think there's a risk of something changing. If they believe that, then they say, "Well, we will only entertain this with the development agreement." As, as the attorney said, there's, there's a lot of space in a legislative decision. It's not something that happens according to a catalog of items.
Thank you.
So, as a, for instance, if this was approved or denied, and the great turnout tonight was at the city council, and you wanted to impart some of your concerns about being bamboozled by the developer, getting the zoning passed, but maybe changing their plans, I think having this conversation in your pocketbook tools, to be able to say a developer agreement would be great.
It's important to note, we don't even want this one, we don't even want--
Sure. Okay.
Public comment has been closed.
Okay, to your point, I understand that, but if you need to go to city council and raise your concerns there, you now have a vocabulary of a developer agreement as a way to help protect the land, because that developer agreement, as Vandalin was saying, goes with the land. So, that's a way for the city council to take some of your concerns to heart and not allow that full maximum build-out size that we've seen in previous presentations. I'm just saying that as a citizen, if I knew that going into a city council meeting and things weren't going my way, but I knew that there was still a way to limit the development in some way, I might use that going forward.
So, attorney, can we say that in the amendment? Can we put a--
So, it's not really, your part of the process is to recommend approval or denial. It's kind of outside of the scope of the planning commission for the development agreements, that's, that's really in the city council's area.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we've all learned something.
It's true. The city council has more say than we do. That's what we learn.
I'd like to speak to the specific criterion for a zone map amendment, so, proposed rezones promote the objectives of the general plan. I'm awash there. Anyone strong thoughts?
No. I, I, I don't, just because I know that it overlaps 7200 South, the Opportunity Zone, and so I feel like there's a kind of a fuzzy border when we get to this point, specifically because the building burned down--
Fair.
--which I think goes to another point that you're going to get to.
Criterion two, clerical error mistake, I think there's not a clerical error mistake--
No, I've only seen that once.
Yeah, Vandalin confirmed the same. Criterion three, land or its surrounding environments have changed, or changed to a degree that the public, that it's in the public interest to encourage redevelopment of the area or recognize the changed character of the area.
Obviously, there's something needs to be done there.
Yeah, I'm generally aligned that after four years of an empty field, that it's in the city's best interest, protects the tax base, other things as well--
Full, right.
Yeah, to, to promote the redevelopment of it. So, I generally think that criterion is fulfilled.
And we need one of the four.
Correct, yeah, and the last criterion, proposed rezone promotes the purposes outlined in the UDOT code annotated. I think that this criterion's also fulfilled, so, that doesn't mean we have to vote for or decline, but, you know--
I don't feel like-- I don't think we have basis to hand it down the road. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I would like to see the property developed, absolutely, and I think this is a way to do it. The developer agreement, I feel like I can't mandate it, but I can definitely recommend it and recommend it to people in this room, just as a citizen, not as Ms. Commissioner up here.
That's, that's one of my, my, I really appreciate what the developer has done, and listening to the-- listening to the concerns of the city and, and the neighbors and stuff, and trying to lower setbacks and, and things like that. I remember when this was first brought, it, it kind of was presented as a, "This is what we could build," and it, it felt a little bit of a bully of, you know, you approve it or we can build, you know, and so I appreciate the, the concept and what, the time that you've put into it, and, and I've appreciated that. So it's, it's made me a little more comfortable. But I think, again, that I like the idea of being able to do a development agreement, or the city council requiring a development agreement, so that it can't go max size in that area, because I think, you know, anything bigger than this, you know, I struggle with, and it is a concern already. And so, again, that's for the record.
Yeah.
And what else?
I have a note on here as well. Mr. Kimball had mentioned the grow and go, promoting less rent in Midvale. And it may not seem like it, but I would say our last four or five meetings have involved subdividing lots so that developers could sell the units rather than renting them. That has been very much on our minds, and we've been very cautious. Staff here has been encouraging developers to go that way, just because of the reasons we've set out. Wanting young families to be able to grow up in our city is something that I think benefits everyone, and having more affordable, I won't say they're all affordable, but having more affordable homes to buy is definitely a great thing about Midvale. Not all the units that are developed are necessarily gonna be prime candidates for that. We do also need rentals. But we have been very busy, and the staff has been very busy with that, that notion of having places for people to buy. So, I, I do want to mention that, just because we're here every two weeks, and some of you maybe aren't aware of all the issues that we go through up here, and that we, the staff works very, very hard to really frame develop, future developments around our, our general plan. They really do. They're very, they are very thoughtful, and they do a lot of work to talk with these developers and really go through all the requirements. Also, there's been a lot of discussion on utilities. I will say that when these projects go through plan review, they are all scrutinized by every department in the city. Things that come up here have been reviewed by fire, they've been reviewed by sewer, they've been reviewed by all of the utilities that would help support the people who live on this property, the people running businesses on these properties. Those are up for review when it goes through plan review. That's very common in cities. And so that, I don't want to say that you shouldn't be concerned, because I knew when the, that building was on fire, I had no water pressure at my house. I knew what was going on, but I could clearly see that there was an issue. So, so those things will be reviewed, and if there need to be upgrades, that will definitely be something the city would recommend, or I don't know that process, but they won't put something up that the infrastructure cannot handle.
So the point is, the point is, we don't have that. We aren't the ones that do the traffic study. The planning commission does not. The planning commission does not do the traffic study.
It, it's also not a criterion that we evaluate against.
That's not the planning commission. And so...
But how can you...
And aware, and aware that...
The public comment has been closed. I'm sorry, you've had your chance, so...
Do you have a question? Can you reopen the public comment?
We can make a motion.
Let's try that. No. Reopen the public comment.
We're, we're in a situation where there is...
None of this is gonna be on the meeting minutes, and that's not fair to the people who are not here, who reviewed this in history.
That's okay.
This is not a town hall.
Let's not bully anybody who's gonna vote on how our area's gonna be zoned. Let's not do that, and you don't have to put that in the minutes.
This is not a town hall.
We're done.
This is not a town hall. This is a planning commission meeting, and we've had our public comments.
Our discussion is between us to make a decision on whether we're gonna approve it or reject it.
There are opportunities at the city council level for open comment, and there are also opportunities directly specific to projects before them. So you will have two more opportunities to speak to this, at least.
Just so you're aware, I live right up in that area myself. I live by Hillcrest. So I know, I grew up here. I went to Hillcrest. I know exactly, it's a mess. I live by, that North Union is right on the corner there. I know exactly. It is a concern. I am not in the position to change that. You know, I've got UDOT, I've got, and the inner city planners. Your people that you voted for need to hear your concerns. We do this as a voluntary basis. You didn't vote for us. The people you vote for need to hear your concerns, and you go to those meetings, you get a lot more done that way than, we're legislative, administrative, that's it. We're not, we don't have a say in a lot of the things, unfortunately. And we're just as compassionate and passionate as we can be and try and be objective up here. It's hard for me, living here most of my life, to see some of the things. And so I don't want you to think that we aren't listening. We are, and it's frustrating for some of us. And we can't leave here and talk about this amongst ourselves at all. That is a big no-no. We can't talk to you after about this. We cannot do it.
Yeah, and, and important number, the actual decision is made at city council. We just recommend one way or the other. So the, the formal decision will go to city council.
City council is your best bet. See the pictures? Those are your people. And so that's your best bet.
Okay, we, we're not, we're not having a dialogue.
No more dialogues. Public comment has been closed. We're sorry that that's the way the rules are, but that's the rules. So thank you for your understanding and...
Yeah. Vice chair, are there other questions we should address?
Yes. Were the ones that stuck out?
So, a lot of congestion. We covered this one. Went into development agreement.
I feel Lindy has something to add.
While the commissioner's thinking about what else to address, I have maybe a suggestion for you. If, if you like, send an email with your concerns, and at the next public hearing in front of the city council, I'm happy to include that with other public comment that may come in.
And that's, and that's available if, even if you can't make the city council meeting?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, if, if you have comment, you're always happy to gather it and to forward it to the planning commission or the city council.
And this is District One, correct?
Voting district?
Is that District One?
Probably.
I think it is. Is it District One? The Essex Court is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's Bonnie Billingsley. Okay, just to point that out, if you're not aware who your representative with city council is.
Were there any other questions to address?
I think we've covered most of them.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yep.
Yeah. Vendelin, do you have that motion up?
Um, yeah, let me just go to the one. Is the presentation still up?
Oh, there we go.
It's up.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. I love that we recommend approval of the zone map amendment to add the regional commercial residential overlay zone to a property located at 7001 South, 900 East, with the findings noted in the staff report.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Chair, Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparian?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for your passion. I wish all neighborhoods were as passionate. I'm sorry, it may not have been the result that you wanted, but there are still opportunities to express your voices. If you want to go outside to discuss, that will help us with the next items on our meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have to go.
No, I'm so happy.
Okay.
We're gonna wait just a moment for the next agenda item for climber in the room.
What you like?
Bee, here.
Because this isn't even correct.
No, it's not. Did you see I made an amendment?
It wasn't. It's very good. I'm an artist, and I can be good.
Again, we still have items on the agenda.
Thanks. I did very well. Are we ready? Should we move on to the next?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to say this guy's last name.
Do your best.
Okay. Russell Opats. I'm gonna murder that.
Opats.
Opats requests a zone map amendment from the single-family residential duplex overlay SF1DO zone to the multifamily residential medium-to-high-density RM25 zone for two properties located at 6854 South, 700 East, and 6852 South, 700 East. Information regarding the proposed regulations, prohibitions, and permitted use, the property will be subject to, if the rezon is adopted, can be found in the Midvale City Code 17-7. Vendelin will be presenting.
Good job.
This application is another zone map amendment. So many of the things we talked about apply here as well. The principle is to see. This one is on 700 East, 6852 and 6854 South. The two addresses because the two parcels, you can't really see it on here, but the one parcel is the driveway that reaches into the block. That's why they had two addresses. As you can see, this is relatively far north. The sort of pinkish color towards the top, that's already I-215.
That's already what?
I don't know. I-215.
Oh.
Zoning wise, this is county zone, single-family residential. And the observed uses, if you driven to the neighborhood, to the north, the single-family. To the west, is single-family. To the south, that's actually condominium project. And to the east, that's also single-family. The, maybe as a justice, little tangent, condominium project being zoned, single-family is odd. This is grandfathered, and this is in the area that was annexed into Midvale in the nineties. And so it was originally developed as an incorporated county. And then when it was annexed into Midvale, Midvale applied, the zoning that Midvale believed is the correct zoning. So that's, that's the history on this. Let me go back to one of the slides here again. As in the other zone map amendment, I added a slide that has one of the general plan maps in it. This is the opportunity area map. And you can see this is, this really is quite far removed from the opportunity area on 7200 South and also Fort Union. I mean, there's no shared border. It's, it's just simply quite a bit further north. The general plan has some goals, and to often form this a little bit, I wanted to just share that with you and the public. So one of the goals here is number five, encourage higher density residential in appropriate locations in opportunity areas to create the market needed for viable commercial development. So, I don't know if I mentioned this, this is in a, what is, what the general plan calls a stability area, which in general plan lingo means the city expects that there won't be much of a change in this area. And as, as you can see in the goals, if there were change, the goal is to have change, especially in the aspect of intensification of a use, to have that happen in opportunity areas. So that just as a little bit of background of how the general plan is set up. With regard to our criteria that are laid down in the code, does this propose, promote the objectives of the general plan? And the answer is no. The way our general plan is written, within the zoning realm, it doesn't. Number two, again, does and really apply, the current zoning isn't a result of a clerical error or mistake of fact. Has the land or its surrounding environments changed? And is it in the public interest to encourage redevelopment? In my analysis, I came down as thinking, no, it hasn't. There isn't anything in the physical space in, in this area of the city that has substantially changed. Does the proposed rezoning promote the purposes outlined in Utah Code annotated 109A102? This is again our general screen of, is this, you know, an application that's within the realm of what the state law views as acceptable? In the end, I came down as saying, I don't believe so in this particular case because of potential impact on the neighboring properties. However, one could probably see this as debatable. It's, it's really a, depending on how you construct your argument. Your general plan, if you dig a little deeper into general plans, they address a myriad of issues, and depending on what you emphasize, you may come to a different conclusion. In my mind, the criteria that we are looking for haven't been fulfilled. The general plan clearly, and there's no debate about this, shows this in an area of stability. And it is also clearly surrounded by the single-family residential zone. And this is the motion that I'm recommending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
What's currently on the property?
So currently Valley Behavioral Health has two facilities on the property that have been there, I think for an extended period of time, but the petitioner, I think, can, you know, inform you exactly what all is currently on the property and what they think they would want to do with the property. And, you know, they, they addressed some of that in their letter, in the application materials.
Anything else?
Not at this time.
Let's have the applicant come up, please. State your name.
Hi, Russell Opats. I think you got it right. Close enough.
I wasn't good on phonics in school.
You were never hooked on phonics, huh?
I was not. It's not your style.
So I am with Valley Behavioral Health. And just wanted to go through a few slides here and thank you, Wendellin. We don't really disagree with much Wendellin shared. It is indeed not in alignment with Midville's general plan. And it is what you would call a spot zone proposal surrounded by single-family development at the moment. And a couple of things, maybe just to set the stage. So Valley Behavioral Health is a, you know, a 501(c)(3) established in 1984. And we're a mental health care behavioral health provider. So we serve low-income, extremely low-income individuals with behavioral health needs. And we operate quite a bit of housing in Salt Lake County as well as Summit County, around 500 units. These are all deeply affordable housing. We've been the developer through the tax credit program, also through various HUD programs to develop these deeply affordable properties that we also have enriched services onsite at. So, you know, some things there that you all are familiar with, but to Wendellin's point or some of the commissioner's questions. So the existing site does have two existing structures on it. This one outlined in red is one of our HUD housing properties. So this has been here since 1988. It's been operating as a multi-family property on this lot. Yes, it was grandfathered in. It is a multi-family property, 12 units serving individuals with behavioral health needs. We have had quite a few meetings with city council, local neighbors. Most, I don't think I've met anybody who even knew that that property existed there or operated as such. So that speaks to the secluded nature of this lot. The other site in red, which is on the south side of the lot, is what we call Valley Phoenix. And this is a residential treatment program, same. People are not aware this is there. This is a residential treatment inpatient program for women, which is very rare in the state and nationally, where women who need residential treatment services can go and actually bring their children. And we have amenities there so they can actually receive treatment without having the separation from their children while they receive that treatment. So it's a very unique program, very successful, and that operates there as well. One example, we have staff that work in this building, stone's throw away from that 12-unit multi-family. They had no idea that that was a Valley-owned property. Some of them said, oh, that's that nice little nursing home to the north of us. So it is a very secluded area. And then the site that we're talking about is this lovely brown field here, almost two acres, that is just vacant. For context, those three rectangles are school buses that are no longer there. For our youth programs, we sold them, but that gives you an idea of scale. And then also gives you an idea of the setback with the creek there and the trees, old growth, mature trees that are, you know, 50 feet high and very secluded. You can't even, as you can see in this picture here, those trees, you can't see the neighboring properties through those trees. As Wendellin stated, we're requesting a rezon to RM-25. And one unique, I think, when we talk about spot zoning and one, one of our asks and the reason for pushing this forward, even though it's conflicts with the general plan, is that we are looking to meet a deeply affordable housing need in Midville and in, in our community. And this is something that Midville prioritizes, maybe more so in the Main Street area and those different initiatives that prioritize deeply affordable housing. But as you know, land is scarce in Midville and everywhere. And sometimes opportunities don't always present themselves in the neat little areas that we like to dedicate to specific uses. So we see this as an opportunity to really bring deeply affordable housing. When we talk about deeply affordable housing, this is, these are folks that 30% area median income. For context, that's $20 an hour a single mom would make. Like, that's extremely low income. So a lot of people have those folks in our lives. Where are they gonna live? And this is an opportunity to bring that, bring that to Midville. Most of the other, you know, multi-family that are going up requesting zoning are probably in the 80% AMI and that's in the $100,000 range. So, or above. So this is a deeply affordable housing project. Some of the concerns that may be brought up are around what we could change it to in the future, if this were a zone change. We did present to planning in a work group last month and talked about extensively development agreement and making sure that we'd have something in place and in the form of a deed restriction that would restrict the use and the development outline for a project if a zone change was approved. Also, to note, this would be deeply affordable housing. So typically, most funding sources like tax credit would require a 50-year deed restriction on that lot regardless. So we would have that as well. And would also be an opportunity for Midville to anchor affordability in your community for decades to come. And then maybe just another thing, just how secluded it is. We feel it's a great location for families, given how kind of the setback nature of it and, you know, the trees surrounding it. We feel like it would be a very quiet area and room for, you know, playground or amenities onsite to serve the families. And we also, I'll show you some drawings here in a minute, but just to note, one, the most recent project, I think, in the deeply affordable housing space in Midville was East 72 Apartments. And they had 5,000 folks on our waitlist wanting to move in there. So I think there's 60 units at that property. So very basic concepts. As I mentioned, we did meet with city council, community members. And one thing that we heard loud and clear, as we were looking at site plans and test fits, was keeping it below three stories. If we were to get an RM-25, we could go to three stories, a little higher. So the concepts that I'm showing here are two stories to meet that, which would be under that tree line that you see in those real pictures. And then with parking on the exterior on the south and west. And per density, to Wendellin's point, the grandfather townhomes to the south, pretty much this would match that density in terms of people per acreage. Here's a side profile again with two stories. And this would be in the, anywhere from 40, we could not exceed 50 units. So it would be anywhere, you know, 40 to 45 units, 48 units would be our intent. And then just a quick timeline of how it would, how it would work. As I mentioned, this would be an affordable housing project. So kind of some of those key milestones that we would meet if this were approved this spring. With completion sometime in probably late 2028, 2029, Q1. So that is what I have.
A question for you. So for us to approve a zone map change, it's gotta meet one of the four criteria. And staff has presented that they do not believe it matches any. Can you tell us which of the criteria on you think it would match that would allow us to approve it? Or recommend approval, excuse me?
Well, what was the?
Can we pull up his slide that had the four criteria?
Um, let's just talk about if it's harder, because if you pull it up, then we have to switch everything around. It's, it's the fourth one, the, the one that goes into the state code.
Promotes the purpose.
And we said, you know, this is debatable. It's, it's, it's a matter of how do you construct the argument?
Or can you make that argument?
Um, I cannot right now.
Yeah. It, I mean, it's, to Wendellin's point, it's complicated and it, there's a, there's a lot of, so it's not that thing that you're like, I don't know, I wouldn't know.
And, I mean, and one, one thing you, you can see here is that this, with a lot of background information, you, I mean, you, you wonder, well, if, how much impact is there on the neighboring properties? I mean, we haven't had the public hearing yet and we don't know what the neighboring property owners feel about this. But it's just, you know, one thing to think about.
Okay.
That was my only question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's open this up to the public hearing. Oh, no.
Okay. Okay. Got excited.
Hey, public hearing. So anyone that wants to come forward, you're welcome to. State your name and come up to the mic, please.
And similar to last, we'll have the timer up.
My name is Joe Landgraf. I live at 675 Angie's Circle. I've been a homeowner there for 44 years. The property in question for us, we're well aware of what's been there for four decades. That the ITU, as we refer to it, because that's what's been on the roadside, the intensive training unit, it's been our knowledge that it is what it is. It's a halfway house. It's trying to integrate people back into the community and be a contributor to the solid community. And we know not everyone's gonna be able to pull a nine-to-five job 40 hours a week. That's the reality. I have no particular issues with the property other than what Wendellin has just mentioned also, that is similar to the previous item on the open hearing, that you've got the standard concerns of congestion and basically being a good neighbor when the new development comes in. And so as you are doing in your capacity, people like me that don't get involved in the community, we're very appreciative of what you do and try and build consensus instead of like being a stick in the mud or being pro-developer. We're trying to build a really good fabric in the community. I think you've done a good job. But at this point, I would have, as a homeowner, no particular reservation with the development of the property. The setback actually, because it's a circle, it's an isolated item, that it's quite inconspicuous that if it can be done well at a high level, it could be workable. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Wayne Ederhauser. I'm the state homelessness coordinator and come here to ask for support for this facility. I'll just give you some statistics. And I'm not here advocating for homelessness. I'm advocating for prevention of homelessness. Kim Garner Institute came out with a study last year. They did an inventory of all the state's properties. And the state has a deficit of 77,000 units for deeply affordable, that's 30% area median income and below. And, and that means that for every 100 household that fall within that income, there are three units available for the, for people in that AMI. And that's the concern that we have, is that we need more of this deeply affordable housing. And we're not looking that every, that any city be a concentration of it. Every city would be a participant in, in creating that deeply affordable housing. Last, in 2023, 10,000, over 10,000 people experienced homelessness for the first time. And that's related to the cost of housing. We are now the ninth costliest housing market in the country. And we need these affordable and deeply affordable units. And, and so today we, I come in support of the project because we want to prevent people from getting into homelessness and getting the, the treatment and the, which Valley does very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Joe Fiala. This is my first time seeing any of these plans. So I scrambled to take some notes. I am a professional engineer and I am a concerned resident. Having worked on rezon applications before, I understand the concern of communities and the goals of developers. I think my biggest concern is just knowing where this is in single-family residential. Is this the appropriate space for that? That's one of my biggest concerns as a resident. I can, I, I wrote down a list of all the HOAs in the area. And although it is single-family, there's a lot of density in the space. Do we need more density? As a resident and neighbor, like, and somebody who works in development, I really hate to see single-family get stripped away, especially in this era of development where it is all high density. And by taking that away from a community, it scares me. If this was being subdivided into multiple single-family lots, like, that were affordable, I would be, I think it'd be more appropriate for, for the community and all the neighbors. And I, I just worry about, I, I know that the developer made their statement about how this could change in the future if they didn't own it. But, and there would be that deed restriction and whatnot. So it makes me a little bit more comfortable knowing that. But just, I really would be worried about if somebody were to purchase this property, what they would want to plan to do with it next, how much density would be put in this space. So, excuse me, I'm just a little nervous. So I just wanted to state those things and kind of on a whim.
Thank you.
You did great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We get nervous too up here.
Hi, my name is Richard Shelley, 6849 South, 700 East, right across from the property or the driveway down to the property. The neighbors are aware of what is down that road. And I think there have been issues in the past, but I think most people have been tolerant of it. To increase that, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I believe it's probably the last piece of vacant land in that area of District 1 over there. There might be one more down on Third East. But I would really favor to keep it at the same zoning and work, work something else out better. It's the same issues as, as the prior hearing we just had here, traffic. I live on that corner. It is absolutely terrible. I had a telephone pole wiped right out in front of my house. Okay? Another car up on the driveway, through the fence. On the turn, I've lost three trees. It's bad. And we did a, a traffic, not a traffic study, but I had the police department put up the radar for a month or, or six weeks. And it's terrible. There's no getting away from that. I put a application into the traffic committee that they have in the city here. Never really answered me, other than, we're working on it. Not what we're working on, just we're working on it. There's no mitigation, goes back to the Ninth East, the traffic coming through enchanted. You say you drive up Ninth East and you get caught when the light is busy on 72nd. So you come down enchanted and then run their stop sign and go out on Seventh East. I could bring in a video and people would be amazed. The school bus stops right there, once a week, there's a car goes, blows right by the school bus. Absolutely terrible. So increasing that street or this. So increasing that street or this project here would only add to it. Coming out of that driveway is not really clear. Going south, I believe. Less clear, I should say. You know, um, it's scary even walking on that street. Yes, we have the quiet time between eleven and two, but other than that, it's busy. And the speeding is another problem. So um, I would just hope that you would keep with some of the projections that were made here, that it might not make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'll make this quick. My name is Jared Sanford. I'm the executive director of Valley Behavioral Health. Just for some quick context about Valley. So we are a nonprofit organization, so our, our whole reason of existence is to serve some of the most vulnerable people in our communities. Individuals that have severe mental health issues, individuals with addiction issues, people who are homeless or in an unhoused situation. And as an organization, as you all know, affordable housing, deeply affordable housing is at a crisis point, as Wayne has mentioned, in our communities. And we as an organization have decided to do what we can to bring on more deeply affordable housing for our individuals that need it so desperately. And that's what we're doing here and we're trying to look at our, the land that we own and see what we can do to help uh, some of these, some of these most vulnerable people in our communities, specifically families. As Midvale knows, operating the family shelter, how important deeply affordable housing is for families. And as I've mentioned, we have a treatment facility on site that serves women who have young children. And the women have an addiction issue and they bring their children with them so they can receive treatment. Because a lot of time women can't, they have children and a lot of times they can't bring them with them, so they don't seek out treatment. So we, we engage these women, we treat them, help them get back on their feet, help them become productive members of our communities again, reunite families. And then we can't find a place for them to live. Right? And that's what we're hoping to do here, is to create some family housing. So when they're done with treatment, they have a safe and a sober place to go and live. And we did, and that's the struggle that's we're having right now. So I, I understand there's valid concerns. I understand that, you know, we're in, you know, the planning staff, of course, looked at, look at regulations and codes, but I hope that we also look at kind of broader issues on what's best for some of these most vulnerable people in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zach Treter. I live a countryside, which would be next to this proposed development. Um, looking at the website just now for Valley Health, and please correct me if anything else was wrong. They've got a dozen properties on their website. And this proposed development would be double the next biggest one that they have available right now. It's to have this forty-eight units, one, one, two or three bedrooms. Call that two on average, that's a hundred residents. That's again, more than double any other property they have right now. I guess I would ask why this spot in Midvale, in the middle of all the single-family housing, is the best place for their largest complex of this density? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no more public comment, I would move that we close the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Oh, now it's legal.
I believe it would be legal now.
Daniel?
Yeah, so similar to the, the last agenda item, again, this is a legislative decision. It's being, gonna be made at the city council level. The planning commission's role in this, again, more broad discretion that you have here. However, you are only just making a recommendation for the city council as how you think that they should proceed, but ultimately the decision comes down to them.
Thank you. Any questions, guys? You have any?
Were there questions posed by public hearing that we should address?
Um, definitely traffic. Um, I do remember when that um, radar went up and I kind of felt like it was asking people to like do their best. And that's not necessarily what you want to go for, but when I drive by it every day, I'm like, be like that episode of The Office.
Yes.
So, but I do recognize the traffic on that street. Um, I also live on Seventh East, a little bit south of here, and we have woken up to missing telephone poles and cars in houses. Um, that has happened and I know that that's, yes, in a house.
We're not in Kansas.
So, so I am aware almost directly of the kind of shenanigans that go on, on Seventh East, just traffic wise and how it seems safer than Ninth East, but sometimes it can feel a little bit unsafe walking. So, so I do understand that.
My, my, the things that I've heard is this is just a strange property and we have to deal with it. And I appreciate that the community um, has a willingness to support it and that you've um, you've supported what's there or at least have tolerated it and, and tried to be part of the community rather than um, we just hate our neighbors or whatever we, we can otherwise feel. So I really appreciate that. I also, it's, it's a large piece of property that's very underutilized. And so uh, that's, so I appreciate Valley Mental, Mental Health's point of this is an underutilized piece of property that can be utilized. I like that they have put some forethought into it, that it's, you know, the height and, and, and things like that, so it wouldn't impact the neighbors and stuff. But again, looking at the map, I struggle because it's all single-family residents around there and now we're, you know, just taking this little island that we're kind of stuck with and, and trying to find out what's best for it. And, you know, if we could go back in time, maybe we, none of this should have been allowed there. It should have all just been part of a subdivision and stuff like that. But we can't go back and, and change that. And so I get, we're looking into a crystal ball and what's the?
It's really hard if the single-family, I mean, that is absolutely surrounded.
Yeah, yeah. And even the condominiums and stuff, it's all kind of.
I mean, if it was more condominium style type, you'd be a little bit more inclined, but this is a bit much for the area. It just feels over. And I understand the need.
Yeah.
It isn't that you want to ignore that need and my goodness, we recognize that, but it's not meeting the criteria whatsoever.
Yeah, that, and that's kind of my thought too. Like I appreciate uh,
Right.
that I think, you know, this would be a good use, but I can't make it match any of the criteria.
Right. And that, well, and I, I, I just, my concern is, is I feel like this area is probably, my guess it has at times been a, a burden on the surrounding community at times. And then to intensify that, um, I, I concern, I, that's my concern is that um, there's nothing we can do about it now, but to add on, on to that insult to injury, um, that, that's a concern for me. And uh, again, you know, ha, if we had the pick of all the, the best, most appropriate areas for everything, that would be wonderful, but we don't. You know, we don't have that magic wand.
My struggle with this is to separate the use from the development. That's really because I think the programs as presented, I mean, with all their flaws, is something that all communities need to have and embrace. And I am one who never knew where, that this place existed. I always wondered where that long lane went. It wasn't until I saw the notice sign that staff put out that I was like, oh, that's where they're talking about. But I'm having a really hard time reconciling that this would be a great service for those that need it with putting a development in the wrong spot in the city, um, just for the city overall. It is really tough with a flag lot, and that's what these are called, with a flag lot in this configuration, because it gives you a sense of being withdrawn from your neighbors and from influencing others, when in fact, it does spill over a bit more. It, there can be a false sense. And that's probably why this would be a great concept, a great idea, is because it is so secluded, as mentioned. But I, I'm having a hard time reconciling that with the planning part where it, it meets the criteria. Because my heart wants it, but as um, as someone who follows the, the rules of zoning, um, it, it's, it's put me in a dilemma.
Makes you wish you could like land swap it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, and, and a lot of these, you know, there's, there's certain areas that make sense for these communities in my mind, where they're close to tracks or there's amenities close by and stuff. And this just seems like it's in its own little island, separated from any of those type of amenities and transportation and stuff. Yeah.
For even to go to Walmart.
Yeah.
You know, you're talking, that's a bit of a.
Well, getting on the bus towards Fashion Place, that's over on Winchester, which is over the bridge, and then seventy-two hundred South is quite a ways. Not undoable, but yeah. But as we mentioned, you sometimes don't feel as safe on that road.
Wendellin, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask you, would it help you if I um, put on the screen what the state law says about general plans?
That would be great, actually.
I'd actually pulled it up myself, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Please do.
Star student.
It's scary. An engineer would do that.
Just because, you know, we have several engineers here.
My son's an engineer.
We don't get out of line.
I know. I work with them all day. Okay. I can read, I have my glasses on.
So, and it's, it's under number one. The purposes of this chapter are.
Do you want me to read?
Um, whichever.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, you can talk it all about it.
Does, do commissioners here believe that a, a use like this or a change to the land would help with health, safety or welfare? I find it struggles to meet that criteria on for me.
Prosperity.
Yeah, prosperity, possibly.
For the residents.
Yeah, it, it possibly could, uh, right? Help those people that it would serve, uh, aid their prosperity, okay? Uh, improve morale, peace, good order of comfort. I think it's muted there. I don't know that I'd go either way. Protect the tax base.
I, I don't think that's a concern.
No.
Secure economy and governmental expenditures, I think that's a no.
Agriculture and other industries.
That's a no. Protect both urban and non-urban development, I think that's a no. Protect and ensure access to sunlight for solar, that's a no.
Well, NA.
Yeah, NA. Provide fundamental fairness in land use regulation. I could go either way.
I think I is the most compelling.
I actually think J, the next item, is the most compelling, uh, where it talks about orderly growth and allows growth in a variety of housing types. And I actually think it really hits home on J. And then I think there's an important word here where it says, and, meaning this is an inclusive list. Protect property values.
So J and K are linked.
No, all of the items in the list are linked. Is that the correct reading of the rule, that and would mean uh, it's an inclusive list? Thank you. And so I, I think we would assess it on, are there more merits or demerits um, within the list?
When I do my pros and cons, there's more cons than pros.
I, I think assessing against this criteria and I, I'm in agreement.
Yeah. Let's, let's put it up.
Should I, should I unplug and then we can go back to the rest here?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was very helpful.
Um, with that, I move we recommend denial of the zone map amendment from the single-family residential duplex overlay SF one DO zone to the multifamily residential medium to high-density RM twenty-five zone for two properties located at sixty-eight fifty-four South, seven hundred East and sixty-eight fifty-two South, seven hundred East, with the findings noted in the staff report.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Linkie?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparian?
Yes.
And Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
So the motion passes to recommend denial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, Wendellin would be city council, is this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So um, items that you recommend, it doesn't matter if you recommend approval or if you recommend denial, they move on to the city council.
So there's the next step. So, good luck.
Now we have our staff update and other business.
Thank you for being here.
We appreciate it.
And for your public comments.
We do appreciate it.
And your respect.
Yes.
Yeah, this one is very respectful and I thought it might be harder. And I was surprised that the residents were.
It was nice seeing so many familiar faces.
Yeah.
And a new baby, that's exciting. What did I write his name down? Megan, Megan Anthony. That was a cute little kid. We sometimes get one. It's okay. You've done so much already. I feel like I've done so much already. Okay.
So for the planning department report, um, we've had quite a busy time since the last meeting. There, I guess one thing that I'll tell, quickly tell you about is that we were approached by a consultant that works for UDOT. Um, apparently UDOT is trying to find applicants for um, a funding source that they have and apparently not many cities apply it.
They have free money?
Well, free money is maybe not.
What are they want?
That's the connection.
That was funny.
Yeah. Yes, yes and no. What are the strings?
Wow.
Yeah, actually that free money.
Okay, focus.
Of course, there's a, you know, a local match to all of these things.
Sure.
But still, there's, you know, in essence, free money.
So there's an opportunity.
Yeah, there's an, there's an opportunity, so. And um, they're, they were looking for projects as quickly as we could furnish to them and so they, they, UDOT hired Parametrics to basically help cities to apply. And so we looked at the transportation master plan and thought, you know, what fits into these criteria and we have, we had some feedback. And um, after this, this all happened, this in the last two days, basically. And, and so, and the deadline for application is next week. But so far, they've told us that um, we may have pretty good chances to get money um, for buffed bike lanes on Bingham Junction between Center Street um, and Seventy-Second South. It's, it's relatively easy, most of that would be painting. And um, we also told them in, in the transportation master plan, if you remember, there were these pretty lengthy lists of improvements, linear improvements and spot improvements. And um, on Bingham Junction, it's a very northern tip by Winko, there is a spot improvement shown for pedestrian crossing. And um, if, if you sort of pull up the mental image of that street right when you are at Top Golf, basically, there is actually currently a pedestrian crossing striped, but it's not, you know, yeah, and it's, it's very minimal. And in our meeting today, I learned that that is actually there because it was requested, because there's apparently actually a lot of traffic between Top Golf and the restaurants. And so together with a consultant, we decided it would make sense to put this pedestrian crossing enhancement in that spot, because that's apparently. crossing enhancement in that spot, because that's apparently where the usage is. And so we've, the Parametrics is, is working on a, on a design, but we talked about, um, a pedestrian activated hybrid beacon, so the yellow flashing lights, um, maybe a hog signal, but there's quite a bit of additional cost because hog signals have the arm that goes over the street. And we also talked about a raised crossing there, so you would have, you know, safety enhancements because the pedestrian is higher up, more visible, and there's also, you know, is somewhat of a traffic calming feature, so the deflection, yeah, it's a quasi speed bump. So, I mean, that's, that's one thing that, that's happened. Johnny has been really busy with building permits, um, so the project that you approved at the last meeting, they have been very quick in turning around and working on the building permits. Elizabeth has lots of other projects that she is nursing along. Some of the developers aren't quite as quick as, for example, Brad Reynolds Construction is, um, so, um, yeah, and so on. The parks and open space plan is still going, Portarek Rockwell study, gearing up for kickoff meeting. Johnny, what's the date again for the kickoff meeting?
May 6th.
May 6th?
Yeah, May 6th.
In the afternoon, right?
Is that the Rockwell?
Yeah, one o'clock.
The bike tour?
Yes. Yeah, and we'll, we'll most likely have bike tour plus cars for whoever, you know, doesn't want to use a bike for it. And if, if any of you are interested but haven't been involved, please let us know, we can always come.
I'm going out of town the next day, I can...
In your new car?
I am.
So that's, that's pretty much what I, what I have.
Well, y'all are busy. Good work. And this is amazing.
This was great, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all you have to say about that?
That's all I had to say about it. I already shared what I did yesterday with them.
Hmm.
That was it. What have you got for us? Hurry.
Um, on this?
Yes, be fast.
In the interest of time, maybe I'll just, in the interest of a little, of a little bit of progress, let's maybe talk about one simple principle that seems to be unique to Utah, and that's early vesting.
Yeah.
Um, so when a developer comes in, turns an application in, um...
And pays their dues.
Pardon me?
And pays their dues.
And, yes, and, and that's, that's actually specific in the law, turns everything in, and it's complete, we send out sort of a confirmation that it's complete, when it's complete, um, and pays their fees, and they're vested, meaning even if the city changed the laws in, in the meantime, they still go by the old rules.
That's their start date?
Yeah.
And grandfathered it, essentially, if anything.
And there was a good example of this, I think, within the past for us, where conditional use for an auto body shop changed after we had conditionally approved.
Yes, that is a very good example.
Are you writing an amendment to the book to have, I'm talking to you.
No.
Are you writing an amendment?
No, I, I mean, we just experienced this like this year.
I know.
Yeah.
You should write something.
So these things actually do happen, they make a difference. And in here, we also learn about, there's a couple of exceptions, but the, sort of the level of scrutiny on these exceptions is really high.
The variance is, yeah.
So, anyway, just some food for thought, and then next time, maybe we can rule sort of debriefing from the planning conference into this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I make a motion that we close the meeting, uh, at eight twenty-seven. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Just kidding.